Which is the second reading of the minimum wage ordinance. Michael, you want to talk to us first?
Yes.
All right.
I have a short presentation for you tonight.
Mayor Atkins, could we get an idea of how many people are here to speak to this item?
Sure. Council wants to know how many of you are here on this item tonight, minimum wage. I don't have that many speaker cards.
There's some here with two.
If, oh, okay, never mind. If you want to speak on this item, go ahead and fill out a yellow card and give it to the city clerk. Go ahead, Michael.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor. Members of the City Council, I'm Michael Geena, Assistant City Attorney, and I'm here to speak tonight on the city's minimum wage and paid sick leave ordinance. This is the second reading, this item's on the agenda for the second reading of the ordinance. The council adopted the first reading at your last meeting. The reason that we wanted to present a short presentation tonight is because there was, since the publication of the staff report and agenda, there have been additional, there's been additional amendments which the staff would like to propose to the ordinance. And the, a lot of it is cleanup language, there's some, there are some other changes as well which we would like to highlight for you. And so, staff is recommending that before the City Council go forward and adopt the second reading, that you consider the amendments that we would like to present to you in just a moment, and then give us some direction as to whether or not you would like to adopt those amendments tonight. If you do so, that would require a new first reading of the ordinance. With a second reading to be taking place at your June 2 meeting, that would allow the ordinance to take effect on July 2 instead of the July 1 date which is currently projected to do. And I'll highlight again the timeline for you. So that being said, I'll just dive right in. So as I said, the purpose of this is to highlight for you some proposed amendments to our ordinance, which have been brought to the attention of staff through our review, through comments that we'd received from the public. We also wanted to then talk about what that would mean in terms of the timeline for implementation. We'd ask that you take public testimony, and then you either adopt the second reading of the ordinance as currently published, or adopt the first reading of the amended ordinance. So the next series of slides will be red line of the sections that we would propose would be amended. The language that would be, that we're proposed to, that's proposed to be stricken is in the red strikeout text, and the language that we propose to be adopted in its place is in the red highlight text. So the first section is 537.01 regarding the definition of small business. The changes are there on the slide. The reason that we're proposing this is to tighten up the definition of a small business. We want to make clear that the persons that, that the small business employees would be, employees that are defined previously as an employee under the terms of the ordinance.
Michael?
Yes.
Can you just go back that real quick? You'll see on the one, two, three, four, fifth line, the term employer is in red and we, in, in small, in lowercase, that should have been stricken, and then of course employer capitalized is what we're asking for. So, thanks.
The next proposed amendment is to 537.02 sub D. This is regarding learners. So the, what was discussed at the, and proposed at the la, at the first reading is that a learner, as that term's defined by the, by the state, would be paid 85% of the applicable minimum wage. We would want to clarify that they would be paid no less than 85% of the applicable minimum wage. They certainly could be paid more if the, if the employer so chose. Paid sick leave. So this is in regard, if I could bring you back to AB 1522, which is the state paid sick leave, paid sick leave provisions. In our, in our earlier presentations, we had highlighted for you how the state law has certain provisions for paid sick leave, and we had asked direction about whether or not the City Council would want to provide protections that are above and beyond the state requirements. One of those was the amount of paid sick leave that an employee could use on, in any given year. The provisions of AB 1522 provide that an employee could only use up to 24 hours of paid sick leave each year, regardless of how much paid sick leave, how many paid sick leave hours that employee has actually accrued. The direction from council was to allow an employee to use as much paid sick leave as they have accrued over time. And we, in our earlier version of the ordinance, we had inadvertently not included that in the provision, even though our, even though our staff report had clearly indicated that that was the intent of the council. So this would add, this would add a new section, sub C3, which would specify that an employee would be allowed to use the amount of paid sick leave that he or she has accrued. Enforcement. Section 53707 sub D2 was a provision regarding the enforcement of the ordinance, and the earlier version had provided that an employer would not, was prohibited from funding the increases in compensation by reducing the compensation to the employees or taking away other benefits such as pension vacation and other non-wage benefits. We had received a comment letter from, from a law firm representing the, a group of small businesses, who had expressed concern about how the language as currently written might run afoul of federal ERISA statutes. And so the purpose of this proposed change is to clarify that, is to basically get us out of that arena and carve out exception, carve out that, as long as the, that there couldn't be any reduction of benefits that would be, that would run afoul of the ERISA Those are the proposed changes that we are highlighting for you tonight. If the City Council wishes to adopt...
Can you, can you go back?
Sure.
So there's, there's really two options for the council. One is to essentially delete that provision altogether, or to, to provide for this amendment. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. Okay. So if the city, so there are two options for the council tonight. If you choose to adopt these amendments, and a fir, that would constitute a first reading of the ordinance as amended, and that would happen at tonight's meeting, the second reading of the, of the amended ordinance would then take place at your June 2 meeting, and the ordinance would take effect 30 days thereafter on July 2, 2015. If the City Council did not choose to adopt the new amendments tonight, and instead adopt the second reading of the ordinance as had been previously adopted at your May 5 meeting, then you would adopt the second reading tonight, and then the effective date of the ordinance would be July 1, 2015.
Can I just add, in that, we would then, the idea would be to come back at your next meeting with an ordinance that would then provide for these revisions that we've shown you tonight.
Therefore, our recommendation is that you take public testimony, and then you provide direction to staff about how you would like to move forward with the proposed amendments. Again, if you were to amend the ordinance tonight, then that, that revised ordinance would be, we recommend that you would introduce that after a motion to read by title only, and then adopt the first reading. If you choose to adopt the May 5 version of the ordinance, then you would adopt the second reading of that ordinance. That's the conclusion of my report. I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions before I open it up to the public? Okay. So, there's a few speakers. I'm going to call three in a row, just stand behind the first speaker so we can just go ahead. You can have two minutes. Kristina Hanks, Tom Devine, Susanna Handow.
So I support Emeryville Small Business. I'm here tonight representing the Emeryville Small Business that's been established in 2015, or 2005, so 10 years this past March. First and foremost, my issue is not at all with a gradual wage increase. Let's do it prudent, regional, and with time to prepare. Where I do find great discomfort in this whole process, many businesses are not even aware of what is really taking place, ill-informed and lacking adequate detailed information from the city. We, small business owners, do not have a lobbyist, an organized leader, or any other spokesman to plead our case. What seems is happening in Emeryville is that whoever can garner the most people to a meeting, scream the loudest, is taking precedent in the governance. There's no, there's, there's, it's, it's not anything different than Citizens United or some kind of super PAC, it seems like. If you truly support small business in Emeryville, this is not the kind of process that demonstrates that positively.
Tom Devine.
Hi. Thank you, Mayor Atkins and the council, for giving me an opportunity to speak. My name is Tom Devine, and I am a member of the senior leadership team at Paul Duke Fine Catering, right down the block. And I've been elected to discuss our company views with regards to the passing of the ordinance as it's written now. And first and foremost, the company wants you to know that we do support and congratulate the committee on moving the needle towards a living wage. We realize the increased expenses here in the city, and we respect that. But I'm here, more importantly, to implore that we take a more measured implementation of the, the ordinance, and we feel that it's not responsible to move it forward so quickly without giving businesses a fair amount of time to work that through their own business models and pricing structures. And with that, we would recommend that it's no less than six months of a implementation process. And to tell you a little bit about our company, we've never paid anyone minimum wage at its current rate. We've always been 20% at least higher than the current minimum wage. And catering, like the restaurant business, is highly competitive, it's very labor-intensive, and the margins are thin. And catering, unlike the restaurant industry, has some similarities to manufacturing. All of the events we do and the products we make are proposed six to eight months in advance. So any kind of quick implementation of a dramatic increase like this, which is 60% over minimum wage, has a net impact to my company of 40%, would equate, just in this six-month period from July through December of 2015, of $100,000 in additional costs. And we like to think of ourselves as a partner with the city here on moving this wage forward, but in the manner that it's being done, it feels like a penalty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So after Susanna Handow, Mark B. and Rahel Drar, I'm not sure about that name, I'm sorry. Susanna.
Hi. Good evening, council. I'm Susanna Handow with Scarlet City Espresso Bar. As I spoke to the council previously on this issue, we absolutely support increasing the minimum wage to 1225 right away. We already pay more than that. We think that that's the right thing to do, and we believe that having a plan for going forward to move it beyond that is really important. We do think this is really rushed. We do think that particularly in the food service sector, this is coming, this, it makes very small margins very, very difficult. I'm seeing from my partners in Oakland who are already dealing with this increase, that it's not going well. And I'm seeing from my partners in the city of Emeryville who've preemptively made changes to $15 an hour, that their plans to manage those costs are also failing. It turns out that people are not really willing to pay the prices for food that food actually costs, especially when dining out. We need time, not only to figure out how we're going to fund these changes, but we need time for the community to get ready to take on the responsibility of paying for what they ask for in their foods and services. They're not ready. They're not going to pay it. And if we had just a little bit more community conversation, we might see people recognizing what it's going to take out of their wallet if they really want to get behind this measure. And maybe they'll have a ti, have a chance to get around it, you know, get their heads around it, and be supportive, and really be there for the small businesses in their community. What I think they're going to do instead, what my associates in this city and others are seeing, is that they're staying home. And that's bad, because what that means, like my friends at Grand Tavern, is they laid off half their staff. So those people are getting much less than 1225 an hour. They're getting $0 an hour because those jobs are gone, and now that owner works every shift.
Thank you. Mark B. Hang on a sec, Mark. At the last meeting, I opened public comment by saying that we have a history and a tradition of being respectful during public comment, and I actively discouraged booing and clapping, and if people want to show support for a speaker, you can shake signs, or you can do deaf applause, or something like that. But I, I will not tolerate that kind of thing again, and we can, I can adjourn this meeting, and we can all go home, and I don't think that's what people necessarily want to have happen, so I would ask that you be respectful and contain your, your reactions to public comment. Thank you.
I've been a small business owner in Emeryville for almost 15 years, and I support positive, meaningful community action that benefits those in poverty. I strongly oppose this minimum wage ordinance. But more than opposing this ordinance, I oppose the process. I oppose your rushing this through, and I oppose how extreme, aggressive, and dramatic it is intended to be. Fundamentally, the ordinance seems punitive rather than progressive. It is an angry, knee-jerk reaction against the 1%, the 1% who are not here in this room because they will not be impacted. I believe the error of our times, the one that our generation will sadly be remembered for, is the idea that governance is an act of aggression, that to help some, we must hurt someone else, that there is no mutual interest, that middle ground is a concession to the enemy, and that a community is just a fight between different special interests. While we all know in our hearts that this is nonsense, we play out our public discourse as though we are the only heroes and the opponents the villains. We have rallies to turn real people into hateful caricatures, to turn complex issues into quippy phrases that fit on signs. And in the process, we divide our community. We forget that our goals are shared, and we reduce intelligent discourse to self-righteous intolerance. The government is no longer a Solomon balancing the varied interests that come before it, but just a screaming child shouting for its way. Government becomes little more than a pendulum that swings back and forth, each side trying, when they come into power, to one day up the other in their extremism and intransigence. I see this today in our own city. I would ask you to reflect on how you've gone about your business, the City Council, and whether you have been wise. I would ask you to consider whether your actions have united or divided, and I would ask you to answer whether this is really what government should be.
Rahel, I'm not sure if it's an R, Drar or Di, or, sorry. Come on up.
Hi. My name is Rahel Drar, and I'm from 7-Eleven. Me and my father run it. We just came to the city about three years ago, before all of this happened. But anyway, so I stumbled upon a quote from one of our council members that said, "I think our businesses will be creative enough to make it work, and we'll lift up together." Although that sounds great, the reality is that it'll place a huge burden on our business and all small businesses. I've only come up with three ways to make it work, and none of them benefit either side. And that's laying off employees, raising prices, passing them off to consumers, and cutting our profit margin, which isn't much to begin with. So, you know, we're a franchise, and if you want, you know, we can bring you our last year, or past couple of years salary, and it's, it's probably not half of what you guys make. And that's with us working 15-hour days, you know? We only have four employees, and none of them are minimum wage. You know, all of them are family to us, and actually, all of them are concerned about how we're going to do after these increases. So I just want you guys to keep that in mind. You know, we already work way too hard. It's a struggle, as it is, and I don't know how we can compete after, after this. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Lynn, Cass Magliozzi, Rob Arias.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Lynn. I'm with the East Bay Alliance for a Sustainable Economy and the Lift Up East Bay Coalition, and I want to thank the council and the staff for the hard work that's been done over the past few months. I want to say tonight, I'm hearing very deeply from the business community here, and while I, I agree with one of the previous speakers that there should be a lot more consensus than there is. We were here a few weeks ago, a little over a month ago, where small businesses and workers and community people were all supporting 1225. And that was a momentous occasion in the region, and something that we really feel like is, is a movement to build. We, on the side of workers and community, support small businesses in every city where we're fighting to raise the wage. We believe in a diverse local economy, and we believe raising wages is a part of that solution. So I'll just say, you know, two weeks ago, you heard from, you saw over 50 supporters of raising the wage now in, here in Emeryville. You heard from several dozen speakers, workers, who are struggling to make it on minimum wage, supporting their own families, wanting to put more local money into the economy. And specifically to the issues being raised tonight, on the legal issues, we would support the amended language that's being put forward regarding retaliation and enforcement. We believe the language that is put forward will both protect workers against retaliation and also protect the city against illegal ERISA preemption issues. And I'll just end, you know, 1225 is a start. I understand that for some businesses, it is going to be a stretch. There were businesses here two weeks ago, from Ayers Mendy, supportive businesses from Commonwealth Pub, that believe it's the right thing to do. It may be a stretch in the short term, but they're willing to do it because it's right for the community. So I would also support the council. I believe at the last meeting talked about looking at the city's budget and figuring out ways to support small businesses in concrete ways, and we in the community and in the worker movement would be glad to support that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Cass?
I'm Cass Magliozzi, and I work with fast food workers who have been standing up for making a wage that allows them to meet their basic needs, like groceries, rent, supporting their kids. And I heard somebody else talk about how businesses are being asked to be creative enough, but actually, workers who haven't been making enough to meet their basic needs, story after story is about how they've had to be innovative and creative just to survive, right? Like, it's not about a profit margin, it's just about surviving. We've been asking them for years to meet that level of creativity. And so this is about their ability to pay rent for groceries, for their kids to have extracurriculars and have food on the table, right? And we also support the language, the amended language that would protect them from retaliation. And workers have asked me to come today to share some stories about what happened in Oakland. When Oakland did raise up their minimum wage, a lot of employers were quick to react by trying to cut hours and trying to retaliate against workers that they knew had been standing up for their rights. And workers like Shonda Roberts, like Julio Aguiar at KFC Downtown, they had their hours cut. So it meant literally that week that like, they had to be calling their landlords, right? And they had to be thinking about second jobs and taking more hours, and Julio has to work all night as a security guard, and then back at KFC in the morning. So they petitioned their employer, and they had almost every single person in their store, including managers, sign on to that petition, and their hours were returned to a full schedule. And that's really essential for these workers, so we're asking that when you raise the minimum wage, you also do so in a way that allows workers that basic protection so that it counts for them, and that it doesn't end up hurting them on the back end when they're trying to like, be able to plan their financial lives on this level of like, basic needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Rob Arias, and then after Rob, John Nemec and Mauro Rivera.
I want to apologize for that outburst, first of all, and I also wanted to apologize for standing up at the last meeting. I literally had a plane catch. I want to say that I'm not afraid of unions, and why would I be? I represent small businesses, and unions aren't anti-small business. They are not natural adversaries here. It was council that pitted unions against small business that we saw. And I think this is sad for the city. We advocated for a regional approach to keep Emeryville small businesses competitive with our neighbors who surround us. In fact, at the April study session, no small businesses spoke out against raising the minimum wage. Anyone who says so, or wants to spin it and say something to the contrary, is just a liar. We asked council for regional approach in line with our neighbors. In fact, a full one-third of speakers, and even some labor groups, spoke in favor of regional approach. That's for small businesses. You ignored us. We heard a lot of path to 15 approach. Nobody, nobody asked for $16 an hour in 2009, so the highest wage in the nation. Council, you're acting alone on this. You made concessions on the size of small businesses in some very accelerated time phases, but to say small businesses got everything they want, it's just another lie, and I want the record to reflect this. Councilmember's brother, and someone three of you who are affiliated with, came into small businesses and called them and harassed them, and you did nothing. You ignored this. I also want the record to reflect that a member of council is sharing their personal emails with this person, and small business emails to this person. 115 members of the small business community and residents asked a study be performed to look into the effects on youth employment, layoffs, and the price of goods for fixed income people. Same study, in fact, that staff recommended be performed back in January, that council member Asher moved to remove from the schedule. I also want the record to reflect that Oakland and SF got to vote on this. Emeryville City Council is not giving the public a say in this, I can guarantee you.
Thank you, Rob. That's your time.
Thank you.
John Nemec, Mauro Rivera.
Hi. I'm John Nemec, and I have a small manufacturing company in Emeryville. I've spoken before, and as I mentioned, we manufacture suspenders, and you know, before you get into this business, you make a lot of sacrifices. You know, you, you work for nothing, you work for half a minimum wage, or the minimum wage doesn't matter, the number of hours you work, it doesn't matter, and you work for two or three years. I brought my wife from Czech Republic. She basically, she taught tailoring in Czech Republic, and they can teach tailoring, have to go through three years of school, and we work with people who have no skills, and she's teaching them. She works long hours, 10, 11 hours a day. She works on Saturdays, sometimes on Sundays. She is paid $48,000 a year. And if I would calculate her wage based on the hour and overtime, she would be working for about $12.75 an hour. Okay? The, the other thing that I want to mention is this. I borrowed against my house $500,000, and I borrowed it against the equity against my house, and I said, "Now I'm being put out of business because, you know, we cannot justify increase to $150,000 or $400,000 a year if it goes to $14." So I applied for a loan, for a 30-year loan. I was declined, because they said I don't make enough money in my company. Yet my employees, like Neil McDonald, he makes $48,000 in sales, he bought a duplex. Susan Newman, she has a $200,000 loan on her house. Bupi, who is from India, she bought a duplex, and they all, they, they do well. And none of my employees live in Emeryville, by the way. And if you're so concerned about...
Thanks.
Allow me to finish the sentence, please. If you're so concerned about high cost of rents in Emeryville, make rent control, instead of busting 40-year-old business, instead of putting 40-year-old business out of business. Thank you.
Mauro Rivera, then Mike Gaben, then Brian Donahue.
Hi, council. Good evening. My name's Mauro Rivera from Black Bear Diner. We have been preparing for the increase, and so we've been, you know, to the other small businesses, I know we're... I know, I've been there. So I really know the struggles they're going through of where they're at financially, on their balance sheet to trying to keep up. Fortunately, you know, with the good work and the luck that we've had, we've been able to go beyond that. My question tonight is on getting clarification from the city attorney on how you're going to define the small business of 55 employees and whether or not that will count. I mean, if you're going to count us as, if we're part of the franchise or, you know, of other organizations? Because there's been some conflicting information going around that we've been quite concerned about it. Because we are a franchisee and we do belong to, we pay our franchise fee to a much larger organization. So I just want to make sure tonight somehow that we get a further clarification from the city attorney or the city council as to how, as a franchisee, we will be counted. Will the other franchisees be included as part of that count? Or is it just the people that we employ here in Emeryville?
It's just people you employ in Emeryville.
Okay, so just the people. That's it, simple as that. All right, so that makes a lot easier. Because like I said, it's so much, you know, conflicting information. But, and finally, once again, as I said, to, you know, the smaller businesses have been expressing their, what's happening to them. I mean, yes, please keep in mind what they're saying. And, you know, I'm just blessed to be beyond that. Thank you.
Mike.
Good evening, councilmember. My name is Mike Gaben. I'm with Black Bear Diner. Mayor, I'm glad that you clarified that for us. That's been a very big concern for us with regards to the small business count. Because we were concerned that the way that it read, the definition read that it would, we'd have to add our accountant and anyone that worked for us for compensation, the guy that washed the windows, the guy that did the carpet cleaning, and everybody else would be accounted to that 55 number. And that would have been catastrophic for us, especially since we're right on the cuff in terms of the amount of employees that we have. Now, I wanted to kind of reiterate a little bit more on the difference. I think there's a lot of misconception on what, they look at Black Bear Diner as they look at Denny's or IHOPs. It's very important to understand that, for example, people like us and like these folks that are, have the 7-Eleven, they're not a franchisor. They're just like anyone that has bought a business, Mike's Deli down the street, and they're working for a living. We pay the franchisor a fee for operating the business. And so there needs to be clear distinction between the two. Because getting, we feel like we're getting trampled on as part of big business, big box. And that's not really the case for people like us that are franchisees. Maybe Black Bear Diner or Denny's or IHOP, those are the big franchisors. But us, we're still small business that have invested our hard work, hard work and money to run a business. The only difference is that we're using the Black Bear Diner name with a fee that we pay them. And so it's very important to make that distinction because we, it seems like in all the blogs that I'm reading and everything that I'm reading, Black Bear Diner, Denny's, IHOP, 7-Eleven, big box. And I think we need to make that distinction so we're able to make clearer decisions. And I thank you.
Brian.
Okay. First, I'd like to say that that woman right there.
Selena.
Selena. And that man right there, Rob Arias. Both those people just now slandered me. So they're alleging I committed a crime. And Nora's laughing about this. If somebody commits a crime, let me say it again, Nora. If somebody commits a crime, your remedy is to call the police. That goes for you and for you too. You call the police when a crime's been committed, okay? That's the bright line in America. Now, I'm talking to Mr. Arias and to you and Ms. Davis. If a crime has been committed, you call the police. And what you don't do is you don't slander people. So I reject, I didn't commit the crime. So that makes Mr. Arias, that was a lie. Mr. Arias just told a lie. Because I'm telling you right now, I did not commit that crime. The onus is on you, Mr. Arias.
Brian. Have me arrested. Direct your comments to the council, not to members, not to private individuals.
Well, he just did it to me. And so have other people. Other people turn around and talk to the audience. It's very common. So the onus is on Mr. Arias. And anybody else that wants to slander me, have me arrested. Okay? You know, that, if you can get me arrested, well, then I'll, then you'll have made a point that maybe I did commit a crime. Barring that, you know, stop slandering people. Okay, now I want to talk about Measure C. I mean, I've lived, I've lived there maybe a long time. And one of the nice things about having lived here a long time is you get to see, there's a culture here. And that Measure C was the last time we raised the minimum wage in this town. And we heard it's going to be a calamity. All the businesses that were going to have their wages that they have to pay to their employees go up, were telling us that they're going to leave Emeryville, flee this town, they're going to go out of business. You're destroying the hospitality industry.
That's your time.
Bunk. It was not destroyed. Thank you very much.
Next is Selena Gonzalez, Shum Preston, and Judy Timmell.
Counsel, thank you very much. Mr. Donahue, my condolences. We've all got one in the family, I think. What I would really like to talk on is the new language. That, you know, I'm happy to see that. I know you saw the emails that I sent out today and I addressed you specifically on the question. And one point I want to make is that changing, that you stated that small business was only considered employees who are within the city of Emeryville, that if there are other business entities out there, it doesn't matter. It's what's within the city of Emeryville. You've clarified that. However, that's only if you adopt this language, is my understanding. So that's a point of clarification. The second thing on this ordinance is it still says same business entity. It's still using the language same business entity as opposed to just employer. And my question, I'd like clarification tonight, if you could, please, is what do you mean? Please define what you mean by same business entity and why was that put into the language? Thank you.
Good question. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. Shum Preston with SEIU 10 to 1. I just want to take a moment to remind us of the context of why we're here, which is that poverty is a crisis in this country. It's gotten worse. We're worse off than the previous generations before us. And government, not necessarily at the local level only, but also at the state and federal level, hasn't addressed that. Within that context, we live today in a moment in which throughout the West Coast, wages are rising. I bring that up to let you know that today, the context in which all these debates happening isn't personality disputes or who said what on a blog or whatever. But more importantly, today, in the city of Los Angeles, the city council voted 14 to 1 to raise the wages to $15 by 2020. 3.89 million people in the city of Los Angeles, over 1 million employees. And I want to remind us again of the context with the words of Mayor Eric Garcetti today in The New York Times. He said, "We're leading the country. We're not going to wait for Washington to lift Americans out of poverty. We have too many adults struggling to be living off a poverty wage. This will reestablish some of the equilibrium we've had in the past." What Eric Garcetti today said in Los Angeles is equally true here in Emeryville. I ask us to remember the larger context of why we're here and why the vote you guys have taken is so important. Thank you.
Judy Timmell.
Hi. I'm representing myself and also probably Residents United for livable Emeryville. I am a great supporter of small businesses. I don't have a sign to wave, but I try to patronize small businesses as much as possible. I ran a small business for many years. But I'm also a citizen who cares about workers. Workers are also customers of our small businesses. And when they receive wage raises, they circulate that money throughout the economy and they'll become customers of other small businesses. So we all pay when workers need public assistance because they can't live on their salaries. We'll all benefit when the base is raised. It's a matter of how overdue this raise is, how many years it's been coming. It seems very abrupt, perhaps, to some who haven't been reading the newspapers, watching television. But it's happening all over and it's, I'm happy that it's happening here in my city. The headline in The Chronicle the other day was that it takes a minimum wage of $79 an hour to afford an average apartment in San Francisco. Are we quibbling about $12 an hour here? It seems crazy. We've had consensus on 1225. We've heard from workers and we've heard that small businesses are in support of this and we're just talking about a timeline. It's just overdue and I think you need to go ahead. I agree with the amendments. And thank you for putting yourselves out there. Thank you.
All right. So that concludes public comment.
Can you give your card to the city clerk, please?
I see you, Mr. Carpio. I guess this doesn't conclude public comment.
I wanted to hear, I wanted to hear what everyone had to say before I said anything. And I don't really, while I was sitting there listening, I was trying to come together with some thoughts. But I think the basic thing that I really want to communicate is that, first, thank you. Thank you, city council. Thank you, mayor, for really being courageous in stepping up and doing something that is extremely long overdue. So I said several meetings ago that I live in East Oakland. I do shop here a lot. And due to a personal tragedy in my own life that had to do very much with poverty in our community, our broader community, resulted in the death of my youngest son. Okay? Now, that's just one part of poverty. There is a reality here.
Just speak to me, speak to us, please.
There is a reality here of thousands of people living in our broader community who try very hard, work very hard, and put hours and hours of their life into trying to keep their families together, trying to make a decent living. And we don't really help them doing that because we have allowed the minimum wage to stay so low. And an employer will be able to pick and choose. And of course, I will hire you as an employer if I can get you for $8 an hour rather than pay someone else a higher wage. So raising the minimum wage is a real important and necessary step to enable people to climb out of poverty. Now, 1225 is a really good start. But it is a start. And for small businesses, you know, sure, working hard and trying to, you know, to feed your families or to, is an honorable thing to do. But we can't do it at the expense of others. And by holding back and stopping and trying to delay the minimum wage, which is in fact what's going on in many cases, you know, we can all construct arguments to get to where we want to get and to cause delays, to have the effects that we want. The reality is, there's a human cost to doing that. And you have to take responsibility for that. And if people get angry when they find out you're doing it, well, I'm sorry. You know, people get angry at me when I cut them off on the, you know, because I'm not being conscientious when I'm driving. Okay? You know, I deserve it then. But if you act in a way that is harmful and really harmful delaying this, it is in fact a reason for people to get angry. It's the public that get angry. And they will, they find out. And of course, they feel bad about it. So I would like that to be understood and also to keep in mind that there is a real cost to poverty and delaying people's opportunity to get out of it. So thank you very much.
Redanemec. You don't want to speak? He already spoke, so I'm going to, then you'll pass. Okay. The summer, summer person or, I'm sorry. And the bureau speakers, come on up. I'm sorry, I can't do the names, so I apologize.
My name is James San San Casun from the Bureau 510. I just want to express my disappointment to the process of this, what we call, study. It seems to, it seems like we only used a really small sample of what show up in this room, which three weeks now has only been the same people that I can see. There's a lot, very little fact check, a lot of feeling, but not enough hard data to support the decision. For example, one meeting, we decided that the date would be in October. A week after that, we changed it to July, which seems like the decisions came up. Number of employee that we decide 55 would be a definition for small business, that also just came up from one business. There's no study to really define that. So just going forward, I was, I just wish that there is more strategy and planning and data to support all this. Thank you.
Hi. Thank you so much for letting me speak again. I think we are confused about the words minimum wage. I don't think that minimum wage is for everybody and is not for every wage. Minimum wage is for the first-time worker who has no experience. For example, some of my dishwasher who just came and this is their work, the first work in their life, they earn minimum wage. After three months, they earn more than minimum wage. And the only people in my restaurant who earn minimum wage is the servers because they earn $15 to $20 per hour tips on top of that. I actually earn a lot less than my employee, but I still want to have my business to be survived. And I work 60 hours per week. My husband works full-time and he'll help out every night after work. And we put all the life-saving into our business and we really want our business to be here in the city. But it, I just feels like the way you guys push for the minimum wage, you don't give us time to adjust or you don't give us time to think how we can survive in the hike like this. Yeah, I think, I think I just really surprised as my husband mentioned that last time, last meeting, last two meeting, there are a lot of supporter for the minimum wage. And you guys just decided to go on that direction without any concern or without any finding the truth or the fact of what is really need or going on here. Thank you.
Mr. Carpio.
I just want to get some clarification here. When we talk about the minimum wage, are we including those who have made prior arrangement with their employer that, for instance, they like to have a job at any cost? Or that they would like to have a more interesting job? And I could cite my experience. When I had my shop, the people who work for R and R take apart and put it back, you know, they get a basic wage. But then those people, after a while, they wanted to get in the line that was more interesting. And I told them because of that, then I could not afford because the estimate given, you know, would not allow the same wage, ask for the R and R, and for the repair itself. So if employee made arrangement with employer to work for less, I don't know how is your position, or you can enforce a higher wage if both have agree on a prior condition, and that it may be contrary to the ordinance. But how do you deal with that? Because I'm sure some people will be faced that problem. Thank you.
All right. I see no more public comment, closed public comment at this point, and we have council...
Yeah.
Can we just bring up the definition of a small business real quick?
Okay.
Because we would suggest one other little correction to that. You'll see, it's the seventh line down, and it, the line starts with same business enterprise. And our suggestion would be to strike that phrase and put in its place the term employer.
Capitalize.
Employer in the capital.
Correct.
Okay. That's a good amendment.
And it's covered by state law.
So...
Yeah, Mayor Atkins, I have a question for Mr. Bill.
Yeah.
And this is on the changes to the ERISA language. Do you, is your professional opinion that this will provide some protection from legal challenge?
Yes, we've specifically accepted out any revisions that would otherwise be preempted by ERISA. So you couldn't reduce somebody's benefits that were otherwise, that change was...
So there's no conflict there with the state or federal law?
And looking at, no, and certainly the letter from the lawyer, from Donahue Gallagher, his real issue was about the preemption for benefits. And so we believe this, this addition takes care of that issue.
Thank you.
I'm on your side.
All right. Any other clarifications or questions to the staff?
Can I tell you if you need?
Council?
Thank you very much.
All right. So I want to appreciate the public for restraining yourselves after I chided you. I thought we were able to have a civil, for the most part, a civil discourse. And I do want to say that activities of private individuals that cross a line is something that I don't personally condone. So that being said, I think...
Mayor Atkins, can I respond to that comment? I take very seriously the letters that the council has received from small businesses and other people in the community about issues of harassment, and intimidation, and threats to their business. At the Public Safety Committee last Thursday, I asked the Public Safety Committee to address this issue with a community meeting to define exactly what is harassment, intimidation, threatening behavior? What is the proper procedure when someone comes into your place of business or intimidates you in a public section? What can you do? I think it deserves discussion, and I, Scott Donahue seconded me on this request, and I believe the police chief is going to pursue this matter, and we will see something on this in two or three weeks. Just to let people know that, that there's two members of the council here who absolutely take exception to this type of behavior in the city.
Right. So I think the council is wanting to accept staff's amendments, so that tonight would then constitute a first reading. Do I read?
Move to read by title only.
I would support that route.
Okay.
I agree with that.
Second.
I appreciate the last change to the same business.
Okay.
So, and just every, every one of them, and not delete, but on 07, do the change.
Right.
Correct.
Right. I think that's our consensus.
Yeah, and Mayor Atkins, if I can make another comment. This is certainly not a perfect instrument. It is certainly not a perfect process. We're stumbling along here. Some people are going to benefit, some people are going to be harmed very seriously by it. But I believe we must move forward on this. So I would, I'm glad to see that the council sees that we move ahead with this amended ordinance.
Thank you. I think a lot of us could take up a lot more airtime here talking about why all of us want to move forward with this, but I do want to comment that this is taking a slower pace that starts, that recognizes the particular needs of small businesses, because they're not going to start at 1444, like the other businesses are going to start at that rate, and that that has become, through the actions of Oakland and San Francisco, our regional minimum wage. So what we're doing isn't so far out of line with that. So there's been a motion and a second to read by title only.
Who's second? I'm sorry, I didn't catch you.
I did.
And no objection to that?
No objections.
Okay. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Emeryville, adding Chapter 37 to Title 5 of the Emeryville Municipal Code, Minimum Wage Paid Sick Leave and Other Employment Standards, and adding Section 3-1.141 to Chapter 1 of Title 3 of the Emeryville Municipal Code, Business Taxes.
Move the ordinance. Please call the roll. Aye.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Atkins.
Aye. And thank you all for coming out tonight and expressing your views. This takes us to 6.1, which is public hearing.